States of America and to your public for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And tonight is June 2, 2025, and this is a special meeting for the Milford Board of Education. Can you do a poll call, please, Ms. Griffin? Megan Doyle.
Here.
Scott Fermenter.
Present.
Tracy Erby.
Here.
Tom Kova.
Here.
Lauren Mallor.
Here.
Christina Creed.
Here.
Adam Scobie.
Here.
Mike Smith.
Here.
Cindy Wolf-Poynton.
Here.
And Susan Glenn.
Here.
Ten members present on this virtual. All right, next item on the agenda is public comment. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Milford Board of Education personnel or any person associated with the Milford Public School System. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations and grievances will not be permitted. Consistent with the principles of the Federal Education Right to Privacy Act, discussion of students is prohibited absent parental waiver. Public comment does not allow for two-way conversation between speakers and the board, but we welcome and appreciate your comments and opinions, and all will be taken into consideration. Please note our meetings are televised and livestreamed on YouTube. We ask that you state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment this evening is limited to agenda items only, which are our long-range facilities plan and the capital improvement plan. So if anybody would like to address the board, we have a podium up here.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tim Chaucer. I live at 104 Holly Avenue. I've been in public education for over 50 years, and I'm the director of the Milford Marine Institute. And we've been teaching marine biology, archaeology, bird identification in an old wastewater building for many, many years. So my opinion is you don't need a fancy building to do good education. We show the kids a narwhal tusk, the swimming unicorn. Some of you might know of it, the northern whale. But I really, I cannot believe that in the strategic plan, the favored option according to the newspaper, maybe I'm wrong, according to the newspaper, is to close Joseph Foran High School, Law High School, and build some huge high school, which nobody knows where it's going to go. I just, I cannot believe that that could be where the board might be going. I certainly hope the board is not going in that direction. Former superintendent of school Joe Foran, who I knew personally, you know, helped to create the neighborhood school system, which is the envy of surrounding towns. There's an awful lot of towns that really envy that we have two high schools spread out geographically at very opposite ends of a very large city. We're not a small town anymore. You know, some high schools, like in Hampden, they have one giant high school. The superintendent of schools, Frank Ulow, years ago tried to break it down into two, and the board at that time was very short-sighted. They were counting pennies rather than education, I guess, and they decided to maintain the big high school. Hampden has a history of riots at that school, one so big it made Time Magazine years ago. So West Haven still has a big high school. Some of the towns did experiment with consolidation of one high school, such as Fairfield, then they realized very soon after that that was a big mistake, and they roped them back into two high schools. Meriden did the same. New Britain superintendent always regretted that they consolidated to one high school. Articles describing his feelings are very real, and he always regretted it. He was quoted as saying it every day, he regretted that he consolidated to one high school there. So please, I hope you don't make this mistake. It took a lot of wise people to create the neighborhood system. Please, let's not break it. It's a beautiful, again, the envy of many towns. Now, the consultants we hired, you hired, were from Maryland, and I just want to give you a couple examples of some of the things that they said. They said the sidewalks are in poor condition. Well, I've got photographs of the sidewalks. There were a couple little spots where maybe in the wintertime the plow hit it wrong, and they repaired those. But if you look at the sidewalks, there's thousands of feet of sidewalks, and they're beautiful, absolutely beautiful. So when they describe it in poor condition, with all due respect to the consultants, it's just not so. And if you've been to Foran, you know that. That's not so. The tennis court paint, they say, is discolored. Okay, it's discolored. The paint is discolored. Things wear over time. Is that a real problem? According to them, it's going to cost $37,000 to fix, and the sidewalks over $42,000. Marine classrooms, they called for marine classrooms, $2 million and $118,000 for a marine classroom, and according to them, they want more than $1-2 million to retrofit a classroom. I don't know, that doesn't sound right to me, but the pool finishes, the finishes, which I guess is the surface of the pool, they want over $3 million. They're estimating over $3 million to do that. The sports complex, they took pictures recently, the sports complex. And if you look at the picture that the consultants put in the book, they took the worst angle of Foran High School. I'm talking about Foran High now, okay? And they took the worst angle. If you look at Foran High School, if you Google it on your phones, you'll see it's absolutely beautiful. That's not the picture they put in the consultant report that you all got. They put in an awkward picture of the high school.
Can you wrap up your comments, Mr. Chaucer? Over your three minutes.
Yes, I will. Thank you. Yes, I will. The windows in the main building, $971,000 because some are difficult to open and close. Okay, okay, maybe a little oil, a little grease, I don't know, but they're difficult, so we have to spend $1 million to do windows. Elevator study, just to study the elevator, that's about $10,500. So, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Foran is beautiful. I taught at Foran, adult ed years ago, I taught Foran adult ed. Law's beautiful. Please, let's do something else, you know? All right. Thank you for your time.
Would you like to address the board this evening?
Okay. My name's Mary-Liz Bethok, also known as Emmy, that lives at Plurbiturina Place. I just want to say, I've come to most of your meetings over the last two years, and I've really seen how hard you've worked at trying to make a decision. I think you're in a very difficult position under the economical environment, but you were put into this position because when it was first a cut of 1.8 out of the education budget, to be able to get the majority of it back was for you to do this research for the future. That's where it instigated from. You had 1.5 taken from you last year, you've had another 1.3 from you, and you've persisted going down this avenue to sort this out. You know that something's got to change because, for the sake of the kids, education is so completely different to what it was when I was younger, and I'm 67 now. There was nothing to do with technology. Buildings have to be built to be able to take it, and I'm very aware of that. And the buildings you've got are old, they take a lot of money. So whether you're building something new or updating something, you're going to be spending basically the same amount of money. It's not an easy decision. I voiced in the last meeting, I do have a concern of a great big high school, but that comes from my own personal experience. If it's designed so the kids can feel connected and doesn't cause issues, then go for it because I can see those other two high schools turning into middle schools. What you do with the third one, I don't know. It depends where the land end up being. The last meeting I went to discovering that the old school this building used to be, I'm thinking, damn, you could combine the land with Harborside and start a scratch if you can have it, and it would be central, would be in the middle of this town. I did like that concept being put up, if it's possible to get it from the town and push, oh, sorry, cracking, pushing the rest of the, what's in this building out. I'm sure they could find a nice new place. So that's all I want to say. Thank you for all your hard work, every single one of you.
Anybody else would like to address the board? Okay, seeing now we'll move on to the next agenda item. We are going to move into determination of our long-range facilities planning concepts and take action tonight. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points, just to remind everyone, we've been in a conceptual phase for the last 20 months or so. We've considered lots of data, information, and opinions. We are, we have not looked deeply into specifics at this point. That's the next phase of this project. Tonight we'll give consideration to a preferred concept to move forward for more of those specifics, including but not limiting, limited to an evaluation of potential sites, if that might be needed, potential costs, and a timeline. When we have that information, there will certainly be more opportunities for public input down the road, and at that time, more answers to the many questions that have been asked will be available. And I just wanted to share one, one item with the board, which I think is appropriate given that Mr. Joseph Foran's name came up this evening. Our city clerk shared with me an article that was written in 1995 by a Milford citizen, and it quotes a comment that Mr. Foran made in 1993 during a historical piece that he wrote for an all-class reunion. And it states, and I quote from Joseph A. Foran, "Perhaps on a day in the future, both Law and Foran High Schools will be phased out and a new and up-to-date high school will be erected to serve the needs of students who will be born and living in the 21st century." So this was a comment made over 40 years ago from, by a beloved Milford educator, former superintendent of schools, who many considered a pioneer of education in Milford. So I'll just leave that with all of you to ponder. I'm happy to share this, and I'll save my own opinions for our discussion. So for the next agenda item, we'll start with a motion, and then we'll move into discussion. Motion that the Milford Board of Education approve the following long-range facilities planning concepts to move forward to an RFP, that our primary concept would be to have one new high school, two middle schools, and six elementary schools. If viable land to build one new high school is unavailable, the contingency concept would be, what do we need to do to our two existing high schools to make them sustainable, suggestions for two or three middle schools, and how to best configure six elementary schools?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fermenter. All right, we'll open the floor for discussion. Can you start?
So, sure. So I, I think that we are at a really important moment right now where we need to take a step forward. And are we 100% sure that the step we're taking is the absolute right one? No, I think that, that there are some things that we're still trying to figure out, but we're not going to be able to figure out the details that we need to unless we move into the RFP phase. You know, it's, I, I appreciate Mr. Chaucer's comments tonight so much, and I think one of the challenges with this whole process is you look at a lot of our schools, and from the outside, they look pretty terrific. But as we've heard from Mr. Bradbury, when he has given us really detailed reports on what things look like inside those walls and underneath the ground, we know that there is tons that actually has to be fixed, and that sustaining our schools, our school system as it is now in the existing buildings is not something that we can afford. And frankly, as we move forward as a community, we need to move into the next century. And, you know, one of the things that disturbed me a little bit was at our public hearing last week is how much of a misunderstanding there still seems to be with this, within the community of what the situation is. And so one of the things that I hope is that as we move forward, we can use this RFP process and the discussions that we're, that we've been having to really reiterate all of the things that we've learned. You know, we've been working on this since 2023, which is crazy to think about it, how long it's been, but we have talked about everything from enrollment size and enrollment projections to the conditions of our schools, to hearing from experts, to, you know, hearing from members of the community, and I really feel confident that after gathering all of the data, that moving forward, going ahead with the RFP is going to provide us with the detailed information that we need to know. And so I really hope that my fellow board members also vote in favor of it, and we can take the next necessary step in order to do what's best for our community and do the information gathering that we need to continue to do along the way.
Thank you. Other comments?
Thank you, everyone. I want to say thank you to everyone who attended last week to our meeting. It was really informative to help to hear those, as well as everyone who's emailed us, and appreciate those comments to read and to understand where everyone's coming from. We don't have an option of not doing anything, is what I really feel that we need to do. That's where the situation we are right now. So we are going to make a vote this evening, and it is going to take months before the information comes back to us, and it's going to take months before anything occurs, months, if not years, before anything occurs. And so we have to start planning for the future today because if we go the route, if we come back from an RFP and then we hear there's one space for one high school, and we talk as a community and we figure that's best, and we can accommodate the issues that we're talking about, and we plan for the future, the programming needs, it is unlikely to break ground for at least another four to five years. So we're talking about a school not even being built for at least another eight years before we're walking in the door. And all I keep thinking about is the last three budgets, that we have had to routinely pull money from our accounts and decrease building and maintenance. So all those invisible things that are occurring are still occurring. They're not stopping, and I don't foresee a change truly in our situation regarding our budget. So we have very distinct funding paths. We have our day-to-day operating budget, and we have our long-term planning, which is our capital improvement plans and our bonding allocations. And we have two different resources. And so we have to think about the future because it's not just the high school, it's the middle schools, it's the elementary school. We have two elementary schools that we haven't even touched in the timeframe, and these are complex decisions that are based on how much funding we received, where they are in the buildings, in the life cycle, all of these things. So I think we have to move forward. I am for the one high school to find if there's land, if we can even explore this option going forward. Because if there's no land, there's no place to put it, we can put this conversation to bed and we can move on. We can start thinking about how do we focus on our two high schools. We are currently in the process of making improvements at Jonathan Law. We started that conversation two years ago. We started, the Buildings Committee got that assessment of money in June of last year, I think about then. We are not even going to probably break ground until next June, and it's not from a lack of effort. It's not a lack of people not doing everything. It's people showing up to meetings and doing things, but there are processes behind the scenes that require. So to me, if we're even going to move forward in this community, we have to start the conversation. And I think we've exhausted the amount of information that we have and skill to have a concept. The last thing I'll say is, education is why people come to Milford. I joke, two, three different things. Beach, education system, and easy access to everywhere in the state of Connecticut from Milford. We've demonstrated over the last three years that there is a considerable question about how much money is Milford willing to, to invest in our education from our budget cuts, not just at the board level. We, I know the people in this room support education, but we have to demonstrate as a community that that's we need to do. And so moving forward on this plan is what I think is important.
Thank you. Ms. Creed?
Thank you. We began this process with an awareness of longstanding traditions, rivalries, sentimentals, heartfelt emotions of the love of several of us even in this room, our alma maters, and knowing that we were about to possibly disrupt that. We will continue to face the reality of changing times, demographics, and rising costs. We just cannot stay status quo. If the freshmen of Foran were 14 when they entered, they're now 67 years old. That's how long ago it was that the students of Milford entered a new school. Just imagine how exciting it could be for young families with small children moving into Milford right now. You might have a brand-new state-of-the-art high school building to look forward to. The realities and facts are that we're, that are driving this is why we need too many buildings for too few kids, our buildings need repair beyond regular maintenance, and our buildings need to be right-sized. I believe the pros of one high school outweigh the cons. I was very impressed with the two community conversations. I thought it was just great dialogue, thoughtful, respectful discussion happened, opened people's minds to think differently and embrace the what-ifs. New perspectives, people who've been here in Milford only, you know, five, seven, 10 years, who really just kind of challenged some of the thoughts that are really ingrained in, in what some of us were thinking. I think of the new ability to foster, to fully roster freshmen JV varsity sports. I see middle school intramural, murals being a possibility with fields and grounds to use. I think of a community of one Milford, just like the article just mentioned, you know, getting back to one umbrella and one high school, or kids who played sports and gained friendships and teamwork up till eighth grader now no longer rivals. I think of parity among schools and more opportunities. I think of being able to offer specialized classes, including AP classes, if the need and desire is there, and because everything will be under one roof and we can all be managed, seats can be filled. What has also come across my mind and hearkens to, just a few years ago, our kids did travel soft softball and baseball over the summer. So, we were often in Massachusetts and New Jersey. They had us moving from a geographical area of about 10 miles to fields in the schools mostly. And it almost seems to me as if Milford could be possibly that destination, and not just baseball and softball, but many sports can have tournaments because of the fields will be in such great shape because we know they're great at foreign and law. And then with a new high school, there's more options for that as well. So, that thought process kind of came to me as well. I do believe we will still have community schools. I mean, there'll still be, you know, in general, where they are located. And I mostly do like that we do have that contingency concepts, concept, as if this may be a moot point. But nonetheless, it is definitely needed. I'm glad we've had, you know, this plan going forward. I am in support of it because, again, we won't know really, you know, if we had a crystal ball, that'd be great, but, you know, we need another, you know, nine months or whatever it may be to really know where we stand, and then again, embrace the community and move forward with what comes out of it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Other comments? Mr. Scobie?
Thanks. I want to kind of reiterate a few points that were made and then kind of make some of my own. Like Ms. Doyle mentioned, this is about exploring options and not staying stagnant. I know it seems that a lot of community members are worried that because we're talking about this, you know, tomorrow, we're going to start talking about the one high school, and that's that, and that's what we're doing moving forward. But really, this RFP is about seeing if this is feasible. Right? We're talking, seeing if we can do one high school, and then moving forward with a conversation and another vote from there. Now, in a world where budgets don't exist, I'm pretty sure everyone sitting here would be happy to have two high schools that are exactly the same with the exact same opportunities for every single student, because why not? Right? Why not make two really nice high schools, or three or four, however many, right? But that's just not what's realistic. I mean, Ms. Preet mentioned a crystal ball and not knowing what's happening with the future, but if we look at the past and look at the constant budget cuts that we've been getting, like, we can see kind of with a crystal ball based on the past data that, you know, it's not looking like we'll be able to maintain parity across two schools forever. I also agree that there are pros and cons to two high schools versus the one high school. I hear what people are saying about the bigger class sizes in terms of one high school and about getting lost in the sauce just because of greater population. One thing I just want to try to reassure people is, one high school does not automatically mean that the class sizes are going to be bigger. This one high school is made to accommodate both of those students going into this one building. So, even though one high school sounds like, oh, no, we're jamming everyone in, no, we're building a new high school to accommodate this. So, we should be maintaining the class sizes. It's not just, oh, yeah, 20 students, we'll just make it 35. No, we're going to see if it's feasible to build this one high school and maintain those class sizes. And then, in terms of getting lost in the sauce, this is, this was the biggest difficulty item for me. It's something that I definitely get concerned about when I think about so many people being in one place. But again, with one high school, you are also increasing your staff. So, the number of counselors that are in those two schools, I can't speak for Dr. Ty on this, but I imagine that will have both sets of counselors being moving into one school, if not more, but it'll be equivalents, I imagine. So, that whole getting lost in the sauce should hopefully be alleviated somewhat to the point where I see that one as a con. But again, there are pros and cons to everything that's going to go on with either decision. And maintaining those equal opportunities and offering more programmatic opportunities for the students outweighs the loss in the sauce, only because I am hopeful and optimistic that it won't be a huge concern because of the support that we'll get from everyone being in that. No worries. Again, what this ultimately comes down to is student opportunity and making sure that we can provide student opportunity and equity. And having the two schools with our budgets kind of getting dwindled and reduced year after year, it's just not going to be feasible. When you look at foreign as a pool and a planetarium, law doesn't have. And I don't know, I don't know from the two high school model if we stick with that. I don't know if we want to put a planetarium in a pool there. I have no idea if we're going to go down that route. But it's going to be hard to maintain parity between the two schools in this world that we're in, so. Kind of, again, reiterate what everyone is saying. I agree, there's definitely pros and cons. The one high school, there's some things that have me really worried, and I'm just optimistic that with the combination of the students, also comes a combination of the staff, and the bigger building will kind of alleviate some of those issues. Sorry, one last thing I want to mention. I know this was a really long rant. I didn't mean to do this. One thing that would make very clear at the public forum last week is that communication between the board and the community could be that, I think that part was clear. A lot of, a lot of community members had mentioned that, you know, where is this data? Where's this information? And a lot of it is posted, and all of it is posted. There's a lot of data to sift through. So, my last piece, not directly related to this, but somewhat related is, I think maybe the Board of Ed should look forward to making a condensed, like, one-to-five pager that says, this is what you guys were asking about, and these are our responses to this, so you don't have to sift through pages and pages and pages. That's all good. That was my rant.
Thank you, Mr. Scobie. Mr. Smith, you had, did you have your hand up before?
Yes, thank you. No, I really appreciate you starting off with that quote from Joseph Horan. I saw that the other day and appreciated his wisdom and the need for our community to reevaluate where our school system might look like in 21st century. I'm excited to move forward with this. And that, as folks have said, it's a long way before we come to a decision, and a long way before shovels are in the ground. But I do think back to some of the reports we've seen and how it'll cost us hundreds of millions of dollars to do nothing with our existing facilities. It'll cost hundreds of millions of dollars to do something. So, I'm really excited that we have the opportunity to continue to collect our due diligence to see what we want to have our facilities and your schools like in this system. Whether that is one high school, which is state-of-the-art and brings our community together like we haven't had in half a century, or if we're even investing in our two high schools and our middle schools and our elementary schools. Really excited for the process of continuing to collect the information we need to make an educated decision.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other comments? Mr. Kova?
I'll try not to repeat too much what anybody else said, but I'll start off tacking on to what Mr. Scobie said. I think we do owe the community a summary to boil down all that data into one place and what exactly we're going forward with, what the RFP phase is, the timeline, and everything we talked about. I think, I really appreciate the fact that the community through the various sessions we had, people coming to the meetings here, as well as the public hearing last week, I think we know what the concerns are. So, I think whatever configuration we inevitably end up with, we'll do our best to ensure all the concerns are addressed. And I think in overall, we're trying to make a decision that is fiscally responsible. Tacking off what Mr. Smith said, the Veritas report, try to gauge how much work each building needed to keep them going for another 20 years. The numbers may not be exact because it's based on a certain square footage cost, but the cost to do nothing is $456 million, and you end up with a bunch of 70- to 90-year-old buildings. It's not really fiscally responsible, and you're still left with all the shortfalls that we have now with student spread out, et cetera. So, I think we're looking for a solution that provides equity, you know, opportunity as well as being fiscally responsible. We're not just trying to, you know, just come up with something great just because it's great. It's answering all the questions. So, and I think it's critical to understand that we're going into an evaluation stage, like everybody has already said. We're years away from any actual buildings happening. So, I'm in agreement with what we're planning to go forward with, and I think we need this information upfront to better make a final decision down the line.
Thank you, Mr. Kova. Ms. Erbey?
Thank you. Like everyone said, I agree with a lot of what everyone has said. I think for me, one of the biggest things is that we can't stay where we are, or we could, but we can't stay where we are because we, because we're not static in society. We have to, like, move with and build with the changes. So, I think if we even, this is just that we're continuing to do the process to get the information. So, going forward to see if we can build the one high school, I think is important because it's a conversation that's come up, and we just need to know if we can do it. So, let's see if we can do it. And if we can't, we have our alternatives, and then we'll know. We'll know what we can and what we can't do. So, I am also in agreement with doing the RFP for the one high school and the two or three or the six elementary schools. And I think a couple of comments last week and even in the emails were mentioned doing what is best for the children. And I think for me, that's all we're doing when we're thinking about these schools is what's best, what's the better environment for students. So, I think that's what I have in mind when we're going through everything, and I hope people see that when we're talking about all of this, that we always have the students in mind when we're, students and the teachers. Because teachers, I'm thinking, would benefit a lot from also being in modern and updated facilities, although even if we can't teach in a one-room schoolhouse, it's possible. But it's nice, you know, to do what we can for the students.
Thank you. Ms. Muller?
So, for me, this, for many of us here on the board, this process started about the time we got here. We got here a year and a half ago. This process started shortly before the last election cycle, when several of us joined the board for the first time. And so, being in this process from essentially the beginning and going through with it, for me, it has been a very large exercise in data gathering, which I personally really like. So, thank you for all of that. The more the merrier. Let's go with the data. But it has come from so many different places and so many different angles, and all of it has just been this comprehensive effort to continuously learn more from different places, qualitative, quantitative, anecdotal, hear from the community, hear from evaluations, hear from experts, et cetera, projections, all of it, in order to get to a place where we can, as a board, make a decision about a plan. And that is a way long way off from now. We are still gathering more information. We've reached a point in this process where the type of information that we need now isn't the type of information that we can answer and provide and get ourselves. It's the kind of information where we need experts to actually provide us that level of detail, to provide us cost analysis and site locations and opportunities and specifics about the details that we just can't do ourselves. And that's how the process works. We've done what we can do, and now we go out and we hire people who are experts in these areas to bring us more data, and then we put that into this process as well, and we evaluate it, and then we make a decision. And I know several of my colleagues here on the board are leaning in one way or another on these concepts, and I personally am not. I am very still undecided on what I think is the best way forward for the city of Milford, but I know that I need more information to be able to answer that question for myself. I know that I need more information about costs. I need more information about sites and location and details and new building versus renovating versus enrollment projections versus district structuring and attendance areas. I need that level of information in order to comfortably be able to make a choice. So, two things that I appreciate about this RFP and why I support doing it now, because one, if we don't, we're stuck, and then we're not getting anywhere, and we have to actually come up with a plan, which means we need that information. But I appreciate the fact that it is going to allow us to have that detailed level of information from so many different sources. And I also appreciate that it includes the two concepts, that it includes the primary concept for us to look at and evaluate the feasibility and the cost and what the entirety surrounding that option would look like. But then it also allows us to also continue looking at, okay, if that doesn't work, what do we do with what we have now? Because as everybody has already said, we can't stay where we are. That if there are members of the community and folks who don't realize that yet, then I invite you to explore a lot of the data that we have online or continue asking your questions, because it is very, very clear that what we have is not sustainable. Not only for the future and what our kids deserve, but right now, it just doesn't work the way that we need it to work and the way our kids need it to work. So, we have to do something. So, I appreciate the fact that there are multiple concepts still on the table, and I shouldn't say multiple because we know what multiple looks like, and we started with multiple. I appreciate the fact that it has the two concepts on the table. And I think that there are, I know I'm not alone. I know we've all had lots of conversations, particularly in the last week, since we had the broader community public comment session. And I want to thank everybody who has reached out, both personally on the sidelines, in the grocery stores, email, wherever you have, because it's so important for me to have a sense of what different people are thinking. There may be someone that I know very well, I know exactly what they're probably going to think, and then they surprise me with questions. And it's highlighted how much misinformation is out there and how much lack of an understanding there is out there about a lot of different, not just points of the process that we're in, but specific details of what we're trying to do. And there are four specific ones that I want to just very clearly state out loud, that this is not the board approving a plan. This is the board approving the gathering of additional information so that we can make a more educated decision about a plan in the future. And it's important to emphasize that at this point in time. And there's another question that I've gotten repeatedly about site evaluation. And I think it's important to highlight that we focus on the high school piece because that's the most significant change that the community would experience if we did move to the one high school model. And so, a huge component of that is gathering information about site availability and cost. There is also an element to this of, if we go to six elementary schools, where are they best located? It is not simply that we will take the eight, close two, and stuff those kids in the other six. That's not how it's going to work. It's a matter of finding a location for six schools that distributes them, as our neighborhood schools are, into the parts of town where kids will be, and builds them and structures them in a way that allows us to stay within our current classroom guidelines, our class size guidelines. That's the third really big piece that I personally have been hearing a lot, that our classes are going to explode. Our classes are not going to explode because we're not taking those kids and stuffing them into the existing classrooms right now. We are building facilities and renovating facilities and creating facilities that can accommodate the appropriate number of classes to the appropriate number of students that will be in that building. So, the buildings will accommodate the students within the guidelines that we currently have. That's not, that's a very surprisingly common misperception, which I think I had a little bit in the beginning when we started, and then once it clicked that that adjustment occurs, is not a concern. And then finally, talking about the possibility and why I personally am still open to all of the options we've looked at. Everyone likes to talk about what their experience was. And I came from a school outside of Connecticut that would probably be, by Milford standards, considered absurdly large, but was not absurdly large where I came from and was perfectly fine. But I think that you often hear people talk about increasing the chances that kids get lost in large schools. And I think the reason that kids potentially get lost is because they don't belong. They don't feel like they belong. And we have made a major priority here on the board and across the district to ensure that kids feel like they belong. And oftentimes, you don't feel like you belong when you don't see people like you, when you don't connect with the people who are around you. So, for me, and based on my experience and what I have seen and what I have read from other people's experiences as well, you're not increasing the chances that kids get lost, you're increasing the chances that kids get found. You're making it easier for every kid to find a place where they belong and to find their corner of that school where they fit. And not only does that improve outcomes, that improves lives. So, I think that, to me, that argument is the least effective of all the ones I hear about the large high school. And it's because we have prioritized that sense of belonging so much, and because when you increase the opportunities that kids have to find And because when you increase the opportunities that kids have to find that belonging, then you increase their opportunities for better outcomes and for a better future. So to me, all of these options are still feasible and I appreciate the fact that we're gonna have some more data to make an educated decision in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Muller. Um I don't want to reiterate what everyone else has said either. I agree with um everyone, Ms. Preet, I think you and I are, are very much on the same page. And I, I um, when I, when we started this process, I was not personally in favor of One High School. But over the, uh, the many months, um as we've talked about, all of the data and the information and I've listened to others, um my thinking has shifted. And um, you know, I am seeing somewhat of a little bit of a generational divide between um the, the thinking and I, I might fall into the older generation and I'm trying to be a little bit more um open-minded. I remember my, my own children telling me when they were in high school how much they would have appreciated having One High School, which shocked me when they admitted that. Um but they did. And then, you know, realizing that when they were in school, I mean, our high schools were considerably larger than what they are right now. So the One High School um that they were in was not that much smaller than what a One High School would be if we combined the two at this point. So I think, uh, you know, the comments that have been made about belonging and about um addressing the, the needs of every child, I think we have a good track record in Milford of trying to do that and, and supporting those things that kids need. Um for me, you know, I started to think about the um, the programming, um the things that we've talked about, you know, robust science, technology, career pathways. Um and I'm seeing that the, you know, we've seen evidence that the smaller enrollment and the number of schools that we have is starting to impede our ability to um, to offer, you know, a ro- robust opportunities for kids. And I think that's very much keeping the kids in mind. I think that uh we can move forward. We can have a more efficient system and we can still meet the needs of kids um by providing the world-class education in, in buildings that provide the resources that they really deserve to have um to be successful in the world that they are going to graduate into, which I think is a world that none of us can imagine what that will be in another fifteen or twenty years. So I am very much in favor of moving forward with this and um I'm excited to see, you know, where, where this takes us. Um and I do hope that as far as the community is concerned, that we um, that we can bring them along with us. And I, I am committed myself to making sure that um going forward, there are many opportunities for um public input and um that we, you know, will try to do a better job of um making information accessible to the public. So with that, I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? No opposed. Okay, so motion carries unanimously. Very good. So we have a, we have a scenario to move forward with. Um the next item on our agenda, well, let me say first, you know, thank you, everybody, for all the hard work we put into this. Um I think we'll have a little bit of a break from rolling playing work while we um put together the RFP and bring that, those, um, that information in, but then we start again in earnest. So um, next item on the agenda is discussion of that um RF, actually gonna be a RFQ/RFP. So I'll turn the meeting back over to Dr. Katia and Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. So this uh time in the agenda, we actually have a draft for the board to react to. We thought it would behoove us not to start with blank white pages. Uh so therefore, this is just our best thinking. Um we obviously know that you're empowered with the pen and ask for your feedback. Uh this RFP process, um getting it done right in writing, correct in writing, is pretty important because it helps um ensure that we get the product that you're looking for uh at the end of this process. So I'm hoping that you had an opportunity to review the draft. We are um interested, Mr. Brennan and I, to hear your feedback. Do you have any words to share, Mr. Brennan, before we get started?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Katia, and just eleven members of the board. Uh so as Dr. Katia mentioned, we thought we would put some initial pieces together. Um we thought it was important to look at it as an RFQ slash RFP so that we could take a look at the request for qualifications and the request for proposals in conjunction. The overall RFQ/RFP is gonna be much bigger than this uh document that you have right now. Most of the other language will be standard boilerplate language. It will include things like general instructions, additional background information, conditions of the response, insurance requirements, non collusion certificate, things of that nature. So I thought the heart of the work was really the RFQ/RFP project overview, which you guys have included in your document. We broke that up into eight distinct sections for you. The introduction, which goes through some of the places that we've gone through. We thought that would be important for this firm to understand where we've been. Uh the purpose of this RFQ/RFP, effective delivery of educational programs over the next fifty years. And uh we do have some different area, area, areas in here that we definitely love some feedback on, under the scope of services particularly and the qualification and experience. At this time, uh we're happy to go through any of these more in depth or explain some of our initial thinking or entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Um I, when looking at this, um I thought that based on the conversations that we've had as a board and upon the fact that really everything kind of hinges on the land piece for the One High School, that the land analysis really should move up to the top of the list for scope of services. Um I don't know how other board members feel. My thinking, my understanding was that if, if, if these experts determine that, no, there really is not any viable land in Milford, that we kind of stop that, that, stop the process at that point and we revert back to our contingency options. So I think um that needs to be a little bit more clear. And I, I guess, under the deliverables too, it might, under the bullet points, the dark square bullet points, uh evaluate potential land sites might perhaps be, should be the first piece there. Anybody else has any feedback on that?
I have one for the deliverables as well. Um so I know you mentioned the, the data that you'll provide includes the facilities condition assessment. I was just curious if the, the people that are, I guess, bidding on this, are they meant to just solely work off of that facility's condition assessment? Are they also going to be doing their own assessment of the buildings?
So the work that we've completed already, I wouldn't expect this firm
They wouldn't touch that yet, okay.
Yeah, dive deep into that area since that was its own comprehensive study in isolation.
That was my only question on deliverables.
And just one note on here, I did asterisk down at the bottom there, these studies will be provided to the selected firm. Since these were all public documents, I was gonna just link those into the document anyway. So I was gonna take the liberty of changing, striking that and then just linking these items to anybody from the board's work.
Oh, okay, so that, I, because I had an ask, I had a question there of whether or not the actual bullet points under background should be asterisk. So you're gonna take that line out and just put the, so the line that says these studies will be provided to the selected firm?
Absolutely, yeah, I was gonna just
So that's gonna come out, you're gonna put the actual links in those three?
They're gonna link them, they're all public documents, they're presented at the board meetings anyways, so.
That makes sense. The other thing I was wondering about is whether we can, um, and I don't know if this is the time or not, but um with the deliverables, whether we can identify some, um, so Mr. Stein, when we met with him, used the term phasing scenarios, I think. If we can delineate, you know, some short-term, things that we can do short-term or, you know, more immediate versus long-term. I know there's been some, um, I don't think it's been talked about so much during our meetings, but um, you know, I have had people question whether, are we just gonna be sitting around waiting? If, let's just say we can move forward with One High School, are we just gonna sit around and wait for that to happen? Or are there other things that we can be doing? For instance, the elementary piece, if we could start working on the elementary piece while the other items are, you know, the longer-term items are, are moving along. So I don't know if there's some way to
Is that part of the timeline and schedule that they come up with?
Well, I'm
Because that's
That's what I'm wondering.
That's one of the evaluation criteria, but it's not one of the deliverables? Which feels like it's a bit, unless it's included in there somewhere or it didn't.
I think it's project timeline of them providing it to us.
Project timeline and schedule to me was more of project and timeline for this work, not of the long-range.
Yeah, number seven is what we're gonna be looking at to choose a firm, right? But adding a full, how to move forward with a concept's timeline would be a bullet we could put into the deliverables.
Yes.
That includes the phasing concept that Glennon was discussing.
And they could tell us whether, while you're working on the high school, go ahead and work on this.
Right, we have found this is fast, you could do this slower, yeah.
Ms. Glennon, can we go back to something you mentioned earlier?
Yeah.
Because I want to make sure we capture it. You said it really quickly, but I want to just, and add language about contingency. Some, you said something to that effect. Do you want direct language in the deliverables there or a whole section separately?
I think it should be more explicit that if there's no land, we must look at the two high schools as they are and determine what needs to be done there.
So it's the, if there is no land for One High School, then make a recommendation?
Right.
Right, based on the motion that we just made, we need to use that same language.
So let's grab that.
I have, so I have, uh, this is under the move land analysis to the top and then right after that, put the, if no land is available, revert back to the contingency and then include that language that was in the motion, right?
It fits in with the, it fits in actually with one of the comments that I saw looking at this as well, that it's not just if it's available, but all of those, if it's available and viable. If we can't do this, then look at this instead.
Because I think I've said this before, one of the things that Mr. Stein, which I never in a million years thought about, I just, you know, was thinking, we just need thirty-five acres. But it's not as cut and dry as that. There's lots of other things they have to look at to determine if a piece of property would actually be viable to put a high school on. So that's part of it too.
And I think part of that comes in the uh land analysis, that second bullet, size, location, accessibility, environmental constraints, zoning regulations, things like that.
Uh I don't know if this is appropriate in here or not. If they go, if they're able to find land and move forward with the, the two middle schools, which are presumptively law and foreign, what would be need to be done at law and foreign to make them appropriate for middle schools? Or is that too far?
No, I think it's in the part of this in here.
Wait, can you, that, can you say more about what needs to be done? Because it's almost all, all, it's like, how do you renovate those two schools? Is that part of the scope of this?
Get bullet three under new construction.
Okay. Renovation, fits there, that's fine.
One that jumped out at me and this may just be because I spent too much of my life trying to respond to RFPs. If I was looking at this like a respondent?
Um you guys are going much faster than we're keeping up. Can I honestly just say that out loud?
Yes.
Because you guys are popcorn-ing your ideas and we're processing going, I don't think so, I don't agree, I don't know, maybe, like, is, so can we just, is it okay to ask you guys to slow down a bit?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna go back to this question that Mr. Brennan has.
Yeah, so I just want to put this idea out there. We're asking this firm to conduct a land analysis and then if not viable, then they would truncate the scope of the work. So we're asking this firm to immediately make an assumption that they know what those guidelines of viable versus non-viable are. So if there is land and it costs one million dollars, would they consider that viable or would they consider that not viable? So that, that, I just want to back us up to that part for a second because I'm just worried about a firm taking the liberty of saying, well, that's not viable. But the board would say, that is viable.
For me, viability is the physically viable, I mean, does it?
Is it a swamp? Is it thirty-five acres on a toxic landfill? It's not viable.
Money to acquire that piece of land does not do in, does not automatically do a rule-out for us then?
Right, correct.
Okay.
It goes into the cost analysis.
I think we should uh be explicit with that then, um because I don't want a firm to take the liberty of saying, well, that's not viable when
Well, let's play that out more. So it's in the cost analysis, yes. And they say, now I'm gonna say it's fifty million dollars, we're gonna go ahead and build out the scope of one, two, six. And let's just say fifty million is not viable from the financial perspective. So now we have this firm not building out the two, two or three, six because they're moving forward with the one. They found the land, it costs fifty, so it's not gonna cost that much.
But your question does make sense.
But I'm just making it up.
Right, it's a question for us of is there, is it necessary in this process to have a touch point when there is land that is physically viable for us to weigh in on whether or not the financial cost of that land is acceptable to us moving forward or we want them to detour to the backup contingency? Or do we want to say, whatever the cost of that land is factored into your calculations, continue moving ahead at the risk that the end of the day, we'll say, well, that was way too much, we can't spend that much on the land and now we want to go back to the contingency anyway?
So Ms. Glennon, you've often, in our conversations, referred to the um Stein's presentation page that has the arrow that goes back?
Yes.
So I guess, um, just operationally, how does this firm know they have to go back to the first square? And like from their expertise, uh, it's not a swamp, great, there's access road, great. There's the fire people save, great, like there's all these, so from their level of expertise, they're gonna move forward. So I wonder in this timeline, Mr. Brennan, that we ask for intentional updates or checkpoints so that the board can give some direction with some occasional findings? Not necessarily they come to us in March and say, okay, ta-da.
That makes sense to me.
I, I just agree with that. That's what I intended to just say. But apparently it didn't.
Yes, so they would
No, no, before that, that's what I said, that we build in a checkpoint where we can check the financial viability of the proposal before they move ahead with the rest of the evaluation criteria.
Absolutely, I just wanted to put that consideration out there.
So Ms. Preet pointed out, in, in Mr. Stein's uh presentation to us, he, there's a slide on site considerations for a new consolidated high school that has a bunch of bullet points. Is there any need to be that specific in this? Or would a, would a firm know that these are the items that they would be looking at? Says property size, boundary configuration, environmental impacts, utilities, traffic impact, public safety, um blah blah. There's many different, you want to box them in?
Those are sort, sort of those elements that we put under um there.
Right.
But I think also the GIS mapping uh takes some of those things into consideration. So the intention of that bullet point was to take a look at the descriptive data, but also some of the hard, actual concrete data that we would have and uh think about how do we identify patterns, traffic patterns? How do we identify locations close to emergency services, you know, for security purposes? How do we make sure that, that, that part of town isn't, um, you know, the traffic leading into the, the school is gonna be a factor? So I think we could spell them out, give them some uh small examples and then kind of put
But not limited to?
Not limited to, in language.
We're gonna leave it open to whatever they suggest also because we assume they are the experts at that.
Right. Okay, and just going back to one more, uh Ms. Doyle, I just want to make sure that um while Ms. Muller is correct that the um, under new construction analysis, bullet two, nope, bullet three, does cover the new construction and renovation. Uh degree of specificity, I just don't want to not deliver what you're expecting. This is the feasibility of doing that. But am I hearing you say, we want like a hard number, how do you renovate law to make it a middle school?
No, we don't need a hard number.
No, but you're, you're thinking feasibility?
Feasibility, reality of it.
So the bullet point Ms. Muller pointed out does cover it for you? Okay, great, fine. Okay, Ms. Muller, thanks for allowing us to interrupt you. Sorry, we just wanted to catch up with your thinking.
That's, that's fine. I was circling a, a big one a little bit that went off of what Ms. Glennon was saying early on. This may not be as relevant, but if I was reading this as a respondent, it would be a potential point of confusion that I would ask for clarification on. So perhaps just avoiding that in the beginning or not. What we are asking them to do overall in this project is to develop and evaluate potential school consolidation scenarios with a focus on this one. So we are asking bullet one, sub-bullet one, so I'm gonna call it one point one, that first sub-bullet, that is what we are asking them to do. And in order to do that, we are asking them to in order to do that bullet, we are asking them to do these other sections of things. So I would almost pull that bullet out and list it as this is what you are doing. Under the scope, you are to do this period, this is your objective. And to do that, you're gonna do a land analysis, you're gonna do the school consolidation analysis that looks at the impact on transportation, specialized programming, demographic involvement, those things. And then these other sections, I think that bullet itself captures what the actual purpose of the scope, the services are. And is the thing that they are working towards rather than a sub-bullet as a piece of all of this. It kind of fits into a more, it, it's not a sub-piece of what they're trying to do, it's not a component of the deliverables, it is the actual thing. So. There was a lot of clarity in my head when I started that conversation. Or when I started that conversation fifteen minutes ago, there was clarity around that.
I think I just, I missed that first part, so.
No, no, so that bullet right there.
Which bullet were you talking about?
Under school consolidation analysis.
Yes. Develop and evaluate potential.
That is what we are asking them to do.
Okay.
Is to evaluate these scenarios with a focus on this one scenario. And in that analysis, we want them to include the land component, the school consolidation component, the new school construction, potential renovation component. And we want that analysis to be provided in this series of deliverables.
So that first bullet point should just be like the opening statement.
Right, so under scope of services, she's suggesting it say, right, under scope of services, it would say development and evaluate potential school consolidation scenarios?
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah. Like the goal of this is this, and while you're doing this, take a look.
From the perspective of a respondent, there is no clear, here's what you're doing. There's a lot of background, there's a lot of deliverables, there's a lot of considerations, but there's no, here's what your objective is.
And is that where we'd then be more clear about, and if that doesn't work?
Yes.
Work on the contingency.
Yeah, I think so, yes.
That would be there.
Because that's the objective.
So the selected firm will be expected to provide, develop and then all that piece there with the contingency plan and then go into the rest of us.
Yes, 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 yes.
Right.
Yes.
So that bullet just pops out, gets a little extra phrasing and you stick it at the top.
We can do that.
I think that'll, that'll clarify the respondent perspective. Mr. Scobie?
Under, under the qualifications and experience, I, I don't have a lot of experience with RFPs and R2, I don't know if this is too much. And I don't know how many folks out there, many companies, firms actually have a long list of jobs they've done like this, but I know just thinking about like job descriptions and things like that, I always find it's better to quantify than experience. So rather than just saying experience in developing and evaluating school consolidation scenarios, I know that last bullet point mentioned provide three similar projects. So I mean, again, I don't know how many firms have multiple projects under their belt, but this means anybody that's only done three jobs could essentially apply for this and, right, at least, but if somebody's only done three, they could apply for this. And I don't know if that's not many in the world of firms that work, so I don't know if we want to quantify and say, you know, has done at least eight or more, experienced in eight or more developing and evaluating school consolidation scenarios or, I don't know, it's a normal number, eight might be really high for, I know.
But, um, yes, and what if they've been the cheapest firm in town and they're getting a lot of gigs and maybe the quality, like there's also, it's not just a quantity thing?
I think part of the language there for me was the proposing firm must demonstrate the following qualifications and experience, so it's really on them to show us how they meet the needs of our scope of the work there. So to that point, I, you know, I worry about quantifying it because maybe the best firm has only done seven, you know, and I don't wanna rule them out, I think through our process, through our, you know, our selection process, we would take a look at those different pieces and we would choose the firm that can best demonstrate that they can meet those qualifications for us.
I completely agree with where you're coming from, I'm not, I'm not gonna die in this hill if we say no to this, but the, the only reason I was suggesting this is if, if we keep it too open, we might be sifting through, I don't know, hundreds of applicants. Um, but if we quantify, maybe not, maybe seven is too high, but maybe we quantify to five. Um, again, I don't know what is too high or too low of a number, it might take a hundred applicants and knock it down to.
I think the phrase in that bullet actually, Mr. Scobie, is the last five years, because we want people who are relevant and up to date, so I don't know that we mind changing that number, but the point there is that we want more current work done in the world of school construction, so. It's also part of the evaluation criteria, so we can evaluate it once we see what comes in, yeah.
Well, can I clarify, are we doing this request of for qualifications first? And you say yes, and then they put the RFPs in and, and, or?
So the process is gonna be pretty similar to what we would do for like a permanent schools type thing, but this one is gonna actually include qualifications and proposals all at the same time.
Okay.
So we're gonna look at those as a whole.
And then are you, what we've done before is that the administration does the preliminary work and then says, hey, there's six, we think these don't have the qualifications that meet here. And we talk about it as a board and kick out the ones that don't work.
Yeah, so, so the board would select which firm they feel are qualified.
Cause we've had situations with the RFPs where they might be a great firm, but they didn't follow directions for one, two, three, four, so they're not qualified. So there are situations like that as well.
Yeah, there won't be hundreds though.
Yeah, I've never done this, I don't know how many firms are out there throwing their names in this hat.
It is kinda fun though, it would be good.
I think too, the, limiting it to five years, I agree with that, I think we do want relevant and current people, um, I think realistically most firms probably in the course of five years are, they're not doing, you know, ten, ten of these.
Depends how big they are. If it's a really large firm and they have, you know. I, um, so because we've done this a bit, Mr. Scobie, I wouldn't worry about the number that's listed here, like Ms. Doyle said, you're, you're gonna get a holistic view of this firm and their experiences and, um, most of them have websites chock full of all of their projects and you can even see pictures of it, get references, et cetera, so I wouldn't worry about the number so much, but the relevant and current work is what I would prioritize specifically because of this topic, we want the current spaces. But thank you for that. Do you have any feedback, Mr. Smith? I don't wanna forget you over there.
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. For the comments? All right, I guess this is good, do you have anything else you need to share or anything you wanted to clarify? Um, we're just gonna go ahead and launch, we're gonna make revisions, run it by council. So while you'll get a break on this for the summer, we won't, wink, wink. That's why I was kinda laughing, I, I got Ms. Mahler's eye in, it's not, it's not gonna be a break for us. So what we're gonna be doing, what we're gonna be doing is finalizing this, running it by council, make sure we have all the appropriate language. Uh, we hope to post it, uh, you have a date?
I'm, I'm hoping that it will be posted by June thirteenth, the Friday, the June thirteenth, so just about.
That means good luck in the, in the late thirteenth.
Friday the thirteenth, Thursday the twelfth. Monday the sixteen, yes.
Can I clarify, cause I know you said, Dr. Kataya, that we were popcorning, throwing ideas out. Did we get that we kind of want certain things in phases, like the land piece?
Can you ask your question differently, please?
Sure, I can, so we had the conversation of is the land viable? And if it comes back at fifty million dollars, that is a question for the board, that is not a question really for the RFP. Are there going to be checkpoints?
There are gonna be checkpoints, yes, we're gonna add the language of regular updates.
That's all I wanted to double check.
I think I would include that in the deliverable section.
Yeah.
Language around like a regular checkpoints.
When you, when you suggest.
Typically what we do with a project of this scope is we do something like a weekly or bi-weekly check-in where we have feedback coming in. That's something that we've done on a regular basis with other firms.
Because we are doing this over the summer, we'll likely keep it open for the summer, the RFP process, and then we'll get back to you.
Like if eight, thirteenth, August thirty-first, do you think would be the closing date or that, that long, the full summer?
No, is it okay if we share some thinking on time and dates?
So, um, with the release date of sometime around Friday, June thirteenth, that may shift slightly. Then there would be a period of time where we'd wanna allow firms to ask questions. So we do an RFI, which is a request for information at that point, so that allows them to clarify any information that they wanna dig a little further into. Uh, what we wanna make sure that we do is we don't give one firm an unfair advantage, so we have that period of time where questions can come in. And usually it's about two weeks of time that we give firms to take a look at this, dissect all the information, think of some of their initial questions. At that point, they're not required to send anything in writing to us, no proposals. Uh, at that point, we usually take about a week, week and a half to then answer those questions. And what we would then do is make sure that we post any question we receive on our website, advertise it, the city's website. Make sure that it's, it's out there in the universe, that these are the answers to all the questions that came in. So it's not one firm asked a question, we give them that answer, different firms ask a question, we give them that answer. We wanna make sure everyone has access to all that information. Uh, and then at that point, uh, we would probably take another two weeks for them to digest that information, think about what the scope of this work is. And then they would submit their qualifications and proposals to us. So I'm anticipating a rough, yes, about the end of July, July twenty-fifth is a estimated time right now, I wanna
map out some of those details, but that's when I'm thinking those would come in.
And then at that point, we would need to, um, get all that information and kind of get it together for you guys as a board.
So board members, I, I had asked everyone to let me know of any, um, current vacation plans that you might have so that we can, um, just so that I can have a, an idea of who isn't, isn't available, um, over the course of the summer. So that would be helpful, if you could share with me, if you know.
May I clarify on that, based on the timeline Mr. Brennan was just saying, they aren't gonna have a deadline on the actual proposals until late July, based on the question and response in July fourth and mapping that all out. They're gonna need time to analyze that information before they provide anything to us, which puts us at mid to late August. Anyway, so is it okay that I don't have my July vacation plans? Cause it sounds like you don't need to be in July.
Well, if we have any, any point, any point of a check-in that we need.
But it's, it's the RFP process, like there is no, there's nothing to check in on until August or later.
That's true.
Correct.
Right, so I think August.
I mean, I'm happy to share my plans with you, I'm not trying to be all secretive.
All right, August, let's say August.
Go away.
Share your, any August dates that you know that you're not gonna be available.
So just a, a point of understanding, particularly since we're speaking in public here, um, we're not doing any analyzing. Um, so hence no screening, what we will do is create organizational chart with each firm and maybe some demographic information, including pricing, et cetera. But we won't analyze and screen, everything will come to you guys, we'll just organize it, okay?
Yeah, that'll be the work that the mayor.
Good clarification, yeah.
Last question, sorry. Is there gonna be one of those things where people have to come and see the schools or anything like that? As part of the, our, our, whatever, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we do, uh, it's, it's called a mandatory pre-bid. I don't think that's necessary at this point with all the background information we're providing, I think the scope of services is pretty clear after our discussion tonight, and I think what it does is it allows them to ask any questions in that process as well. Um, I think it's kinda tricky for this because the mandatory pre-bid would, would really lend itself more to like, here's the school, the specific project's gonna be working on, so since we're talking about Milford as a whole, um, I don't think a mandatory pre-bid would necessarily be needed from this, but great question.
Sounds good, thank you.
Are you ready, good? All right, thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you.
So we're gonna move to the capital improvement plan, Ms. Glenn, and I'll turn things over to Mr. Brennan, this also is in your packet.
Thank you, Dr. Kataya. So as the board is aware, each year we put together and submit a capital improvement plan and we submit this to the mayor. Uh, this is a planning tool, it outlines the basic capital needs of our district over the next five-year period. Uh, each year, the mayor and the board of Alderman will decide which projects to move forward and fund. A very important piece that I wanna just include in here is that these dollar figures are estimates. Uh, that the detailed designs and some further accurate estimates will come along with the actual design phase of this project. So this proposed CIP moving forward is really a needs-based CIP. If you notice, we've, uh, taken a slightly different approach on this CIP than we have in previous years pending our long-range facilities planning. Uh, so if you take a look at this, the twenty-five, twenty-six year is primarily HVAC, boilers, asbestos removal, placecapes, pool replacement, uh, analysis, so these are things that we are in more of an immediate need of. So if you take a look at the actual capital improvement plan that has a different gray and yellow section down there, I'm gonna walk you through that piece. The top part is the ones that, the projects that were funded in last year's capital improvement plan. And then we have the next five years outlined in that white section. The yellow section were all the items that were, um, educationally-based programming that we were taking a look at. We wanted to do an intentional pause on those pending this long-range planning. Uh, the top one I wanna call specific attention to, it says foreign high school, technical education facility and equipment improvements. And then it says TBD at that point, I'd just like to remind the board that at our May twelfth meeting, we took a look at technical ed, uh, improvements at both high schools and with the current cost escalations, we decided to focus the primary amount of that, uh, funding towards Jonathan Law High School. And then at that point, we determined that any remaining funding, if there was any remaining funding, would go towards Joseph A. Ford. So the reason that that's TBD at this time is we are unsure how much remaining funding is going to be allocated towards Ford. Therefore, we're not sure what the remaining ask would be for Ford High School, so we kept that as a TBD for now. And then in that bottom section, that gray section there, just like in previous years, we've separated out uh, some of the major renovation projects that we have for Harborside, Live Oaks and CAF Penn. And those are all TBD at this point with the current cost escalations, we would really need a professional to come in and evaluate how much money we'd need to upgrade each of those buildings. So the projects in particular for this upcoming CIP, if you take a look at the narrative section, the project descriptions, we have it broken down by year, so the first page is for twenty-five, twenty-six. And as I mentioned, uh, I can go through each of these in a little bit more detail. The miscellaneous improvements, HVAC ventilation, boilers, Maceurne, this is a lot to do with keeping our schools up to date with the boilers, HVAC replacement. This is something that we wanna make sure that we stay on top of and not fall behind in. Uh, most of these items are branding, are at, are reaching the end of their useful life, uh, so we wanna make sure that we are keeping up to date with these areas. The exterior improvements, playgrounds and playfields, uh, this is particularly focused on our placecapes and our playgrounds. And we wanna make sure that once again, as they reach their useful life and they can become a safety issue, we wanna make sure we stay ahead of that and we're replacing those on schedule. Uh, Mr. Bradbury, uh, just like everything, keeps a detailed list of when everything was installed and when it's projected to last until, when it's, you know, under the warranty guidelines. And then from there, we, we keep a prioritized list based on needs and wear and tear of when we need to update and replace those pieces. Uh, parking lot repairs, very similar, uh, these stem from deteriorating conditions, useful life is once again at play. You'll, you'll see a common theme here, that these are things at the end of their useful life, these are not wants, these are needs. Uh, cracking, potholes, anything like that, we wanna make sure that we're repairing those different areas. And then the architectural and engineering services for pool design, I wanted to call your attention to this one. So I know that Bureau of Veritas had put some dollar amounts towards our pools in their recent assessment. Um, I think one of them was like three point one seven seven million for the I think they called it the casing and the overview and the different, um, like tiling and stuff like that. And then they also had another two million dollars for the piping piece of it, so this brings us to an approximate cost of about five million dollars, which you'll see in. which you'll see in next year, 26, 27's amount. But I think what we really need at this point is an engineering service to come in and give us a very detailed understanding of what's really happening with the pool. We have concerns that it's getting very, very close to the end of its useful life. It's over 50 years old. And I think a firm that could come in and specify specifically what the issues with the pool is right now and give us some design options and actually give us those actual design options would tell us specifically how much money to include in the capital improvement plan. So that's why we didn't include it in this upcoming year's one because we really need a deep dive into what are our options with the pool. Here's the current problems we have. We know some of our current problems. Most of the piping's underground. We really need somebody to give us a design to tell us it's going to cost X dollars to get closer to that number. And then finally, the asbestos abatement down at the bottom there. This is just our ongoing efforts to attack any of those remaining areas in our buildings and make sure that we are replacing those and keeping our buildings, moving on them, of those different pieces and other hazardous materials. At this time, sorry, there's a lot, but there's a lot there. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So given, I, I just have some concern about the optics. I'm going to be upfront. I, you know, given that we've said that any movement on any long-range planning work that might move forward is years down the road, we still obviously need to continue to maintain our buildings. And certainly, what I'm hearing you say is that these items, the items that have been identified are really necessities at this point.
Yes, exactly.
And I'm wondering, so when it, when it comes to specific schools that might be addressed, I think that's typically not identified until the bonding might be approved? Is that correct?
Or afterwards.
Yeah, so sometimes if we know the exact school at this moment in time, we will specify what that school is. Like for instance, the pool is foreign because that's where it is. What we will do at other times is look at various schools. Because what Mr. Bradbury does is then he takes an immediate needs assessment once that money's secured. And he could say, well, you know, at this point, we thought this, let's take a roof for instance. We thought this roof was going to fail, but all of a sudden, this one that we thought had another year ended up failing. And that now gives him that option to take that money and use it based on his needs schedule. So he does have lists of all the different areas for roofs, boilers, parking lots, all these different things that we're talking about. He has a systematic list of when everything was installed and what the technical useful life of it is. But as we know, sometimes that useful life can change based on wear and tear. So what we do is that we then have that flexibility to address the specific emergent need that comes up at that time.
So we can be somewhat strategic in the schools that are ultimately affected.
Correct. And then, oh, just one more point to that too. What it does is it also allows us the flexibility to get the most out of that that we possibly can. So let's say it was $2 million allocated to that. If we just specified it for one school in particular, now we can only do that one school. Allowing it to be various schools now allows us to say, oh, this came in lower than bid. So now we're able to attack another school that is at need as well.
So I think it's important to remember, I mean, we, we kind of put it up against this, this past spring. The bonding is usually done in the January timeframe. And, you know, that's going to come on the heels of the potential timing when we might be getting back information from a consultant, whatever consultant we decide on. So, who might make some very specific suggestions about specific schools. So I think, I do think we need to be strategic about which schools we identify at that point. I, I have no issue at all with the architectural and engineering services for the pool design. I understand, you know, you've expressed concern about the pool in the past. I have concern about having potential replacement of the pool being shown the following year, given we're going to be potentially talking about having, you know, a different high school. And at that point, we have to decide how we're going to move forward with the pool issue. You know, there's lots, I mean, I have lots of different scenarios going through my head about the pool. What I'm hearing you say is that this, bringing somebody in will really give you a better idea of where the pool stands at this point. In terms of this pool's, you'll be lucky if you get another year out of it versus, you know, you could maybe get five more years out of it.
Correct.
And at that point, we can remove it from the, if we feel lucky, we can remove it from the CIP.
We felt the responsibility signal though to you and the community that we believe this is going.
Well, you have said that before. I think you've said that even last year.
It's in writing and we believe that a replacement may be warranted.
And I think the element of it is that normally we would include those architectural services within the entire package. The reason that I, we broke these out this year was for that intentional reason that it's a need. And if it comes back that the two high schools is the option moving forward, then we've got the ball rolling on what those next steps are. And if, for whatever reason, this architectural service comes back and gives us that better understanding, we now at next year's capital improvement plan have the flexibility of moving that down to that next year or taking it off completely. So it just gives us, rather than putting it in this year and approving it, next year's approval really means, I don't want to say not as much, but it gives us the flexibility of changing it in years to come.
And then the, I just want to be very clear. The pieces that are down farther, that we are, you know, year to be determined, they, it says very clearly here, pending long-range facilities plan. So these are items that we know, have, we've been thinking about for a while. But we're intentionally not, you know, not moving forward with them with specificity because we're waiting to see which direction we'll be going in with that plan.
Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. Mr. Brennan can correct me. But to your point, Ms. Glennon, on the various school projects, I think if we keep the language open when we make a recommendation to the Board of Alderman regarding the bonding, that makes the biggest difference because we ran into that issue regarding forward and law on how we had previously stated it. And so even i- if we move forward with this and it goes to the Board of Alderman in January, it would not even necessarily come to the Permanent Schools Committee until May, June, in that timeframe. So we would have, hopefully, we would have the RFP information at that point. And so we haven't even, we received in the Permanent School Committee the most recent allocations. And we haven't even, we don't even have identified schools yet. So it would be time line appropriate in comparison to the long-range facilities plan.
Any other questions?
I have a question just a, if I may.